It's six o'clock on Monday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council is called to order. Roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Here.
Joseph Jones, not present. Michael Libby.
Here.
Lauren Campbell.
Here.
Teresa Harms, not present.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public hearing. Oh, approval of the agenda with tabling of item C or six C.
Motion to approve tabling six C.
Second. Roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Yes.
Number three, a public hearing on zone code amendments, accessory dwelling unit, and general amendments, city of Windsor Heights.
Trey, I'll take this one.
And there are two presentations. I see it has one public hearing. Do you want me to go through both of them?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, I can get started while you're pulling that up. Hi, everybody. Trey Rouse, city planner, city Windsor Heights. We're going to be starting off going through the accessory dwelling unit zoning code update. Kind of a summary and reasoning. Windsor Heights will go through zoning code update and change based upon staff recommendations, changes to the community and changes to state legislature. This zoning code is being updated due to state of Iowa legislation related to accessory dwelling units. Senate file five nine two, signed by Governor Reynolds, and then being implemented as of July first of two thousand and twenty-five. This will supersede any county and city government oversight on some of the restrictions to ADUs within county and city limits. So this requires at this time that we do an effective update of certain items and relates to ADUs in the community. Going to the actual ADU standards. Within this bill, it lists a series of standards and that's set. What the restrictions, if you go to the next slide.
Sorry, I'm trying.
Oh, you're good. That set the powers of the city and being able to regulate accessory dwelling units within the community. Going through these, you must allow, a city or county must allow one ADU on a single-family residential lot by right, not including any form of conditional use permit or special use permit. You can't restrict ADUs beyond what the single-family residence standards are on that lot, such as maximum height, minimum setbacks, minimum lot sizes, minimum building frontages, maximum lot coverage, density and aesthetics slash architectural requirements. And can't require any specific exterior design, architectural requirements, materials, roof pitch that match the single-family residence on the property. No additional parking standards can be required when adding an ADU to the property beyond what exists for the single-family residence requires. No additional public street or sidewalk maintenance update or improvements are required as well beyond what the single-family residence requires. You can't restrict occupancy of the single-family residence or ADU by requiring property owners to live on property familial status, marital status, employment, relationship, income, or by age. And then finally, you can't require a new or separate series of utilities be installed to the ADU unless the property is unable to collect all utilities through the existing utilities on the property to said ADU. With these changes to the ADU permissions within the county and city, Windsor Heights is going through this update and will show in red all of the necessary changes to our current zoning code. So initially, updating just the residential accessory dwelling unit definition to make sure that it matches what was proposed in the bill. This is just defining it a little bit more in detail, including detached and attached accessory dwelling units. One of the changes that needs to be made is that it must be permitted in every zoning district that permits, single-family residents. Cannot require conditional use permit or a special use permit as we did in the R one district. So updating that to allow all permitted uses where a single-family residential is allowed. And then going into the necessary changes within the supplemental site development required regulations for accessory uses. Going through and defining, making sure that we include all of the restrictions for ADUs. That includes the size restriction of one thousand and shall not exceed one thousand square feet or fifty percent of the square footage of the single-family home. For example, if someone has a three thousand square foot, single-family home, the maximum then becomes fifteen hundred square feet. Then including all other information that was previously stated. And then including within the bill, there's no maximum required or listed. So we applied after discussion with P and Z, a maximum number of ADUs permitted being one on every lot. And then going to the accessory structure standards, making sure that it includes accessory dwelling units and detached as defined, and then also going to after discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission, including that accessory dwelling unit structures will not be, will not go by the accessory structure setbacks being five feet from all, from all lot lines. It will match the single-family residential setbacks, which is allowed by how the bill is written, just not to exceed or be more restrictive than those, than those setbacks. Then there's exception down below. This exception is defining that the accessory dwelling unit is not is not restricted by the height for an accessory structure being twenty-five feet, but the restricted by the height of the zoning district that it is in for a single-family housing, which in per, for example, the R one district is thirty-five feet. We held a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, but there was no public input given at that meeting. So in conclusion, recommendation, after a view of all the documentation available, changes put forth by Iowa Legislation Discussion. City staff compared the changes proposed to the current zoning code, had discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And with assistance from Planning and Zoning Commission came to the recommendation of the staff recommends that the city council approve and adopt the updates to the accessory dwelling unit narrative for the city of Windsor Heights to come into performance with state legislation. The Planning and Zoning Commission added that they would include to meet the standards of the single-family residential dwelling units within their respective zoning districts to come into conformance with the state legislation to city council. So instead of it being defined as an accessory structure with those five-foot setbacks, they would meet the single-family residential setbacks. Do you have any questions for staff?
No questions for me. Thanks for getting us in line with the changes from the State House. And I know that we already have some existing ADUs in town and knowing the housing shortage that we have, I hope that the, that there are people that take advantage of this as an option for them.
Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Yes.
We have this as one item, but you want him to be the second presentation at this time?
There's another one that's just general updates.
Sure. Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yep.
So if you're able to pull up the other one.
Yep.
So this is a general and variance code update throughout the year. Utilizing the zoning code, looking for, we found a couple of small updates that we can do throughout. This also is in part by House File six five two, which is passed and signed, and it impacts the zoning board adjustments, variance approval process. So an update to chapter one seventy-nine has been recommended as well with this series of updates. So going specifically into House File six fifty-two. It is a bill that changes the powers of the zoning board adjustments and their criteria for approval and denial of variances. The bill changes the criteria of hardship and removes that language and instead implements the language of practical difficulty. This is to ease the process of acquiring variances for many properties and not having to define a specific hardship, but bring up requirements for a practical difficulty or makes there, makes it difficult to utilize their property in a lesser manner than hardship would be. So going through some of the updates, most of these are table updates, cleaning things up, making things more uniform. So simply updating the table up there to match with the point oh eight dash oh one. That's the, that's the manner and formatting that we utilize for most of our tables. So if you continue going on, more of those updates to make sure that all these update, update, these table titles match each other. There are no actual changes to the tables themselves. And then to table one sixty-eight, point oh eight dash oh three, update to its titles, making sure that this says setbacks. So just for clarification for those utilizing the various tables and making sure that the references are correct within these tables. And then continuing on, making sure those references are, are correct. Moving on, again, more table updates, table title updates. This is the table that is included in the Parkland dedication, making sure that it has a table to be referenced and easily accessible to those that need it. A link update to make sure that the correct table is referenced at the bottom of this, of one seventy-five point oh nine dash oh four. And then going to chapter one seventy-nine for the powers of the Board of Adjustments. When we went through our zoning code update, we actually included practical difficulty language already. The, several states around us, including Minnesota, utilize practical difficulties and have for last decade or so. It's been very effective. So we made sure to include that language when we were going through that process. So just striking out hardships is really what we need to do. So we removed that language and put it to practical difficulties only. We held a public hearing for this on June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five with the Planning and Zoning Commission. There is no public input given at this time. After review of all the legislation changes and all documentation available, city staff compared changes proposed to the current zoning code and their impact on the community, just making sure that everything is easily accessible and clear for not only staff use, but resident use as well. So the staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval and adoption of the updates, the variance narrative and general narrative for the city of Windsor Heights provided by staff to come into conformance with state legislation to city council. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you for going through and updating. Seems like it's a, it's a process we go through often, but we appreciate you taking the time to, to spell it out for us, too. Okay.
Now your public hearing is open if any comments.
Any public comment? All right, motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Wait, were you asking for the motion or?
Yes, I was asking for the motion.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. All right, number three A.
Hang on.
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, number three A. Consideration of the first reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-five dash zero two in ordinance amending chapters one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, one seventy-two, one seventy-five, and one seventy-nine of the Code of Ordinances for the city of Windsor Heights with regard to accessory dwelling units and general amendments. Motion?
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
None for me.
Hearing none, roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to number four, public forum. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes.
Bob Bishop, one one two eight sixty-fourth Street. Real quick story on one one two two sixty-fifth Street. Not familiar with the property? It's right on the other side of the fence, on the southwest, southeast corner here. Hundred-year-old house, cute little house, one bedroom, concrete, well-maintained. Guy bought it about twenty years ago, lives just out Western Polk County. Thought he'd use it as a rental. Three years, that didn't work out so well. He said, ah, heck with that. Turned off the power, keeps it mowed, hasn't been occupied in fifty, fifteen years. Talked to anybody in the neighborhood? No problem. Like it. Just wanted to let you guys know there are properties that are vacant. It's okay. We're all right with it. I thank you for your time.
Mr. Escobar.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? Moving on to number five, consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, roll call.
Susan Scaries.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
Moving on to number six A. Discussion on one one five one sixty-fifth Street, proposed uses.
Yes, I can get things off. This property is also vacant without problems that I'm aware of. We, the city purchased this property back in early two thousand and twenty-five. We've since then had about ten organizations, individuals walk through the property for potential civic or nonprofit uses to occupy it prior to anticipated future demolition. If and when the city acquires adjoining properties for purposes of redevelopment in line with the comprehensive plan. Presently in front of you, you've got sort of three options to consider and provide some feedback for staff on to move forward with. Ferguson House was previously discussed by city council. And consideration was tabled pending a more extensive search to see what all opportunities were out there. I believe KP is in the audience, along with some colleagues here tonight, if you have questions for him. But we did provide Ferguson House, as well as other organizations, who have a one-page document of what we were looking for for a nonprofit use, general terms, which included a dollar a year rent, some restrictions on occupancy, and clarifying the intent that the leasing would be obligated to maintain that property, including lawn maintenance and any capital improvements that were necessary up until the time it was ready for demolition or they were done leasing the property. Nancy's Place is also here this evening. I believe this is the first time most council members have probably heard that name outside of reading through the packet. Hunter is here this evening on behalf of that organization. They provide dedicated safe housing for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They've also indicated they're agreeable to the draft terms that the city has outlined in the packet as some additional information on who's Nancy's Place is and how they would intend to use the property. And you may wish to hear from Hunter to get some more information on that as well. And then the third option is a conversation I had with a Public Works employee a few weeks ago. They indicated some interest in potentially being able to utilize that property for their own personal housing. We had a little bit of conversation about how that would look like and what that would work for. And conceptually at least, it could include a discount of lease rates in exchange for that employee residing in the house to be on call for community center off-hour emergencies or gas main, water main, break responses to get signage up. And then just general weather-related events that Public Works would typically be involved in. So I don't have specific terms for what that agreement might look like, but that is an additional possible use outside of the nonprofit organizations that we've talked about. And if council is desiring to look forward at that one more, we can assemble some terms for that. Also note, Families Forward did walk through the property a couple of weeks ago, as have several other organizations. They indicated that the capital investment into the house and its setup and layout wasn't a good configuration for their purposes, but would like to be considered for future uses if additional properties are acquired. Also have included in the staff report, a rental certificate update. We did have Safe Building walk through the property a few weeks ago. As the rental certificate had expired, they have a list of improvements necessary prior to occupation of the house. Most of these are pretty small items, alarms, some loose railings, loose doorknobs. In addition to that, I would note the carpet upstairs, I do believe, does need to be replaced or at least seriously cleaned. So that is one other capital investment that's probably needed prior to occupancy. And then Safe Buildings, general comments aligned with staff's feelings that roof windows are all aged. They're in workable condition, but at some point, if occupancy continues in the long term, would need significant repairs. Public Works has been maintaining the exterior of the property, mowing it. We've got some moisture in the basement after one of the heavy rains, which was surprising because there had been some waterproofing down there and had been dry up until then. But we've also done some work on downspouts, trying to channel that water out. And then they did remove a large pine tree that was in the front yard that was beginning to die off as well. So general cost we're seeing is around four hundred dollars on average a month of investment into the property and maintain it at this time. So I think we've met a lot of good, passionate individuals that are working for nonprofits, trying to do good work. I think you have got a couple of good options here for council to consider as far as nonprofit partnerships in addition to the potential for using it as Public Works Housing. I think any of them are viable options. It's really down to council's preference. You know, I think both nonprofits uses would have multiple people living in there. You know, I think there's at least some level of potential for some conflict with neighbors, although I think both organizations would certainly do what they can to mitigate that. Whereas the Public Works Housing, I'd probably have less of an opportunity with that with one individual living in there. But knowing that there are some improvements needed to the house now and could be in the foreseeable future, that does present the risk to city council of having to invest additional dollars into the property, knowing that it will be demolished at some point. So this evening, looking for some feedback from city council on which direction you'd like to pursue, unless it is demolition, we would bring that agreement forward to you, hopefully next city council meeting. Have to answer any questions? Otherwise, KP, Hunter, and some other individuals are in the audience here this evening.
Well, thank you for taking council's request to speak to more partners and make sure that we weren't rushing to anything. This is obviously an exciting time, I think, for for our city, right, in making some progress and also giving back to our community by making an option available for, for someone. So thank you for, for that. Maybe I jumped in too soon. Sorry. Okay. Hunter, would you like to come up?
My name's Hunter Cook. I live in Urberville, Iowa. Funny enough, I did live on sixty-fourth Street a while ago, and I think that house that was mentioned was my neighbor. Didn't have any issues with it minus the cottonwood tree, if it's the one I'm thinking about. But yeah, we walked through the house. Everything looked pretty good for what, for what we can do with it. Didn't look good, but it's easy to fix up. One of the things I'd like to alleviate to is the concern for issues with the neighborhood. I work for Woodward Resource Center as well. I help individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and home and community-based waiver get out of institutionalized settings into the community. I also work full-time working with individuals. The, the concern for maladaptive behaviors in the community is actually very low. One of the benefits for us maintaining that house is because the individuals have twenty-four hour supports. There's kind of a low-key security guard around at all times if there's ever an issue. Another benefit is Gigi's Playhouse is right across the street. I've been there many Fridays for karaoke. My own personal clients, when I was writing up the proposal, they were asking me what I was doing and I let them know and they asked if they could move in so they could walk right over to Gigi's all the time. So, so the concern for that is pretty negligible. We only place individuals who are a good fit in the community and make sure that they are ready to go and ready to work with others. The other thing is, I think with the three to four individuals that we, I put five on there, but we'll probably have three to four that would live together. They, the proximity to shopping and everything else, their shopping can actually help local sales tax and help out as well so that they will be contributing to the greater community as well as just being residents. I've also, and I know this, this housing is temporary, and one question that I was expecting is, well, what happens when the project's ready to go? By utilizing the grocery receipts and rental income for these homes, we can actually create a pool to buy a secondary home for other individuals. It's a great, you know, income sheet when you have grocery receipts coming in from this home. And then over time, whenever you guys are ready, whether it's pulling out the equity of whatever other property we have or just saving a pool, we will actually be able to have the individuals that are living in this property find another home tailor-made for them with the grocery receipts that we have saved by doing so. So if there's a concern about them being unhoused later on, that shouldn't be an issue and we'll have that taken care of. We have over sixty nonprofit partners that work with us. I've already have a lot of home and community-based waiver partners that are like, hey, sign us up, fix it up. And we have individuals that we can get in right now. Not too long ago, I spoke at the Polk County Housing Trust Symposium for, for housing. The, the statistics that we have, in the next ten years, we're going to have twofold of a homeless issue, especially for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So I think this is a good way for the city, the city to show its commitment to this population and also to help us set up housing later by using the grocery receipts to do so. And I can answer the questions too, rather than talking.
Well, you answered one question that I, I had. I was going to ask what happens once the, the city moves forward. And so thank you for addressing that before we even, you know, had any questions asked.
That was my top concern too. I was like, uh-oh, well, what do we do when time runs out? So that was the, that was the first thing on my mind.
Thank you.
No, thank you for, the packet was, was really well put together. So I feel like that answered most of the questions that were my initial questions. You did mention twenty-four hours, having a caseworker or somebody there on site, right?
Yeah, we have a twenty-four hour support. How it works and the, the reason these individuals need housing is I started this nonprofit as a passion project because I've been in this field for over ten years. And it's embarrassing some of the homes that I've worked in. And I work twelve-hour shifts and I get to go home. A lot of the individuals that I support, they don't, they, they live there. So I, I created this organization to utilize a five oh one C three tax status to do so. And the way this kind of works for having twenty-four hour support is they're all under the poverty line for the most part. And the reason they live in these, these homes that aren't exactly up to snuff is because they have to pay rent and they have to use a portion of their income to pay for these twenty-four hour support staff. So this is a really outside-the-box way on our part to get around that problem.
And one last question. Your board of directors, what, how long are their terms? How, how long have most of them been involved with?
We've had a three-year float-offs. The, one of our founding members did, but actually two of them have. And the rest, they want to stay on and they're having a good time. So we are looking at opening that up if anyone's interested, but we're working on that.
Just, it's good to see, you know, institutional knowledge. When somebody leaves a board of directors, sometimes some of the, their knowledge leaves with them. So I'm glad to hear that you've got good tenure on there, too.
Oh, yeah. They, they put up with my, my crazy ideas, so.
All right. Any other questions? Michael, do you have any questions? I'm going to say no.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
KP, did you have anything that you'd like to say? I mean, you don't have to. I just wanted to give you.
Open hand, fifty quid. I just want to thank you all for considering us, whether they want to.
Thank you. All right. So I guess where do we, where do we go from here with, with us? You're looking for kind of direction, correct? Is that kind of what we're?
Yeah, I think at this point, I think the search is probably complete. I think we've reached out to most organizations that are likely to be interested in the property. And you have two potential tenants plus the addition. And you have two potential tenants, plus the addition of city housing, city staff housing options. So I guess maybe the first question is, you move the direction of nonprofit housing in here, or city staff housing in here? And then, if it is nonprofit, which of the two organizations do you feel is the best fit for 1151?
I mean, I, this is a really, this is a really hard decision to make because we've got two well-qualified, well-deserving organizations that are in line of what we're trying to do with this property in the meantime, before we're ready for the next use for that property. And that makes it a challenge. You know, the idea of the city staff person gives me a little bit of hesitation, even though Public Works has the longest tenure, I think, of any of our departments. To have housing tied to employment, I think, could, I would hate for it to become sticky or become difficult for any other parties involved. And that's my only hesitation with that. But, you know, I think both what Nancy's Place wants to do, what the Ferguson House aims to do, are both gaps in our current housing stock availability, and would both fill a very important gap for us. For me, one thing that stands out from Nancy's Place is the letters of support from the school district, from other nonprofits, from a parent, from Optima Life Services. Knowing that they've got not just their board and their organization, but they've got other organizations that are supporting them and making this happen, I feel like that is something to take into consideration right now. But this is hard, because saying yes to one means we've got to say no to the other. So I'm kind of kicking myself right now that we asked you to make sure that we had, you know, checked with everybody, because that makes it even harder. But I think, right now, just on paper, I think that my recommendation would be that we move forward with Nancy's Place, and that if that is unable to work out, then Ferguson House become, you know, they're on, would be on deck for that, for whatever reason, as this process continues, if it didn't work out. That's, again, that's just my personal preference. I guess I'd have to motion that. But I want to, since this is a conversation, you know, Michael and Susan as well.
Thanks, Lauren. Yeah, this is a difficult decision, I think, for all of us to make. Two fine organizations wanting the same place. And thank you again, Adam, for fleshing all of this out. My preference would be toward Nancy's Place.
Thank you. So, I also am leaning towards the nonprofits, the two of them. I don't think that the city should be trying to be landlords, in that that's not something that I would like to add to any of our staff members' plates, including any of ours as council members. Maybe I'm selfish that way, but I do think that both of these nonprofits have two great sets of traits to them, and we have a great opportunity because we're on the bus line. We're close to Gigi's. We're, you know, there's so many options for everyone that, too bad we couldn't find ourselves another house that we could have both of the people here for. Maybe, maybe the one bedroom, but might be a little close quarters. But I guess if I were to pick, I would go with Nancy's Place as well, but Ferguson is, they are, the Ferguson House is right up there, close. I think that what kind of sent me kind of more towards Nancy's Place was, again, the letters of support, and then having Gigi's House right there, where people could go right across the street for the services. And, you know, hopefully, that would be a great thing for all the residents.
So, can I motion, then, that we direct city staff to move forward with Nancy's Place, and if that does not work out, then to be in contact with Ferguson House?
So since this is a discussion, do we, are we just giving general guidance?
You're giving general guidance, so I don't think we need a full motion, because we'll bring back an actual agreement at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Noted the direction.
I've already had a couple motions tonight. This is a big night for me, okay?
All righty. I'm assuming you have-
Yep. I'll be in touch, Hunter, and in touch, Hunter, and we'll try to bring an agreement back to council in two weeks.
Thank you, Ferguson House, too. We really appreciate it, and ideally, we'll be in touch with, as we progress on our future plans, too. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to number 6B, discussion on 64th Street and Sunset Terrace Parking and Pedestrian Crossing.
Yes, I'll give a quick update, and then, Doctor, I know you're on a timeline. How are we doing? You got a few minutes? Okay. So in March 2025, there was a city council discussion regarding two intersections there off of 64th, Sunset, and Colby, and some residents that had requested some additional traffic calming devices to try and facilitate better pedestrian crossings, particularly during school starting and school ending. Council had a conversation. The direction at that time was to install crosswalk signs and paint crosswalks at both of these intersections. Those are both now in place, but they did not get into place until summer break had begun. And the council direction was to bring back this discussion item for an update and any further feedback prior to school starting. And so, we have that on the agenda tonight for a quick update for you and any further direction, but we don't have any information regarding efficacy of the additional signage that's been put in place there today. We have had some additional discussion with a couple of residents that had been interested in this topic. Continue to get some feedback expressed regarding potential four-way stop on this intersection, which is a reminder, this was last studied seven, eight years ago by Bolton and Mink. At that point, it did not meet traffic warrants for a four-way stop. We did have some discussions with the school back in February of 2025 about whether dynamic stop signs would be appropriate there, and that's something the school is interested in managing. And then we've also talked about lit crosswalks, potential pedestrian signage in the middle of the crosswalk on the street, so vehicles would be very hard-pressed to miss that crosswalk. But at this point, staff recommendation is no additional action at this point, unless council feels there's additional signage or traffic devices that are needed there. We do have included in the packet here information on historical accidents. Now, keep in mind that is not inclusive of near misses, only actual accidents that were reported to the police, but it has been a fairly problem-free intersection for the last seven or eight years. In addition, PD has been out at this intersection. At various points during the school year, they've put some cones out at the intersection to try to discourage people from parking temporarily or sitting in their vehicle that might block or obstruct views, particularly at the Sunset intersection. And Dr. Gosson has also been communicating through the weekly newsletter, I believe, standard parking practices for pickup and drop-off, and intends to continue to do so. So, that's a quick update. There's some more information in the staff report, but the school principal is here if he has any further comments, and if city council has any further direction for staff prior to school starting, we can get that action underway.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dr. Michael Gosson. I'm the principal over at Kohl's. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you to the city for hearing the parent concerns and taking some action and getting out there. It was great to collaborate with city administrator and others to be able to go out there and really kind of have a better understanding of what's happening in the community and then take action. So I really appreciate your guys' help in doing that. And it was truly a collaborative effort on the, on the city administrator, as well as law enforcement in doing that. So, we have been, I've been, you know, even since our conversation, February, you know, just kind of keeping an eye on that traffic situation. I realized that there's probably a lot more traffic on that Sunset Terrace, and then less traffic going out to Colby. It just seems like that there's more vehicles that park on those side streets leaning up there, and then you have less that get out to Colby, but it's still an issue. I think the signage, the additional signage is going to help immensely. I think that painting the crosswalk is going to help. I do think that the clear stop signs are going to help. I do know that community concerns, too, are just, you know, that parking, and I know there's some concerns about people maybe parking right on the egress of people's driveways. And I think the law enforcement did a great job of doing kind of a soft enforcement and just saying, hey, we need you to move along and things like that. I do think, I've been really just observing, even though over the past couple of weeks, just kind of watching, I do see that there's just a habitual pattern of people, especially on Sunset Terrace, not so much on Colby, but Sunset Terrace, just kind of blowing, necessarily blowing through the stop sign. I did see a lot of people, like, not really stop at the stop sign. They just kind of keep on, keep on moving, especially if there's nobody that's right there. But my concern is that east-west that's right there. There's just, because there's no real habit right now to actually stop or pause or look, that that could potentially cause a problem with families or with kids walking. But I'm also thinking, you know, I have a duty to make sure that my students are well-informed and making sure, hey, when you're at the stop sign, make sure you stop and look both ways. What we tend to tell kids is, look, look both ways, live more days, kind of thing. And so, that's just kind of a way to make it fun. But I think that there would be some, some benefit of having an east and west marker of some sort. We, as Adam talked about, we talked about having an active, kind of an active stop where, you know, you might have a stop sign that drops, and we would be willing to help manage that as well. But, and then we would probably just need to leverage law enforcement to be able to kind of enforce that when it is up. But we're talking about a short window, like, in the morning, and, you know, after kids are, you know, come into school, you know, and once everybody's safely and secure in school, then we can put it back up so that, you know, traffic can go as normal. And then, you know, at the end of the day, as well, just for maybe a half hour, 45-minute window. But otherwise, I think that, I think that at the beginning of the year, I think it's just going to be a collaborative effort with law enforcement and school personnel to really inform our public, our students, and then just kind of do that soft enforcement there, just reminds, you know, people, hey, when you park, make sure you park before these signs so that people can see back and forth. So, okay, that's all I got for right now. But I'm, I'm willing to take any kind of questions or anything.
First of all, thanks so much for coming out. And has the school year started yet for Kohl's?
When does it end? No, I'm just kidding.
Fair.
No, no, no. So, I know that the staff will start to come back on the 18th, and the students, their first day back is the 25th, so.
While my son doesn't go to Kohl's, I know that every year, you have the exciting job of retraining the parents, that they're like, this is your fourth year. How is this? Yeah, and then also the new parents, too. So, I know that there's an education piece, and we've seen a couple of the newsletter articles reminding parents. I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
When I was in school, approximately 100 years ago, they had, the oldest grade was crossing guards, and they would wear a reflective vest. I went to Windsor, and it was for Crossing University. Has there, is that anything, is that anything Des Moines Public Schools currently does? Is that an opportunity to help with some of those crossing pain points?
I know that that's been a point of conversation. We've been advised against it just because of the liability, but it's not something that we can't do. One of the things that we did start last year that we haven't had in the past is an ambassador program for our older students, our middle school students, and in hopes to kind of transfer that into a student council government. And so, right now, they, we're kind of using, we don't have a whole lot of numbers in that middle school, and a lot of those students, they leave right, well, several of those students leave right away to go to Central Campus because they have alternative programming there. So we just, and so we use, also use a lot of students at the very beginning of the day to really kind of support collaborative teams among our staff at the beginning of the day. So, normally, I think prior, normally our staff would man the doors and entrances and exits and do that, but now we've kind of shifted that load to our middle school students. And so, we just have fewer people. And then I think the district is just, you know, in the event something were to happen, a car blow through or something like that, then that's a little bit of a different discussion. So, and as far as, I've even tried to, tried to coax staff into saying, hey, would you-
Wouldn't you want to wear this high-vis vest?
Yeah, right. I can make it hot pink for you. I could do, you know, and they're just, they're just so bound by contract, you know. I would like to think, though, that we could, you know, I'd be willing to leverage even a, you know, a parent or community parents, you know, that, you know, we have a very supportive parent group that, you know, different times throughout the year, I put up signup geniuses or things like that, and they've been really supportive. I could try to leverage something, something like that, and see if-
Not a call to action, just wondering if there, if that was still, definitely makes sense that the district wants to shy away from that because of the liability. A lot has changed since the 80s and 90s when they were crossing guard at school. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I know Bree was a crossing guard at Windsor, and so that was probably 15-ish years ago now. That was the big thing. But they did have teachers that also manned those areas, which is something that I've been asking for about the last two years. You know, could we get some help from the school? Because it really is just, as someone who lives on 64th Street, it really is just those timeframes-
Yeah, right.
-at the school. And maybe now that more Montessori schools are going to be opening up in Des Moines, maybe now it will maybe go back to more of a neighborhood school where people can, instead of, because my husband went there when he was young, so like, many, many years ago now.
Before it was a Montessori school?
Before it was Montessori.
Yeah.
So, he said, you know, that was a neighborhood school, so everybody would walk there. And I think that's probably why there's the parking strains that there are, was because it was a neighborhood school. And now, you know, in the last probably 10 years, it's really been, a lot of people are driving into and causing the traffic. So, you know, if there's some way that we could kind of, us as neighbors, do what we can, and we, you know, try to be graceful when people block our driveways, and, you know, except when I have to get out, you know, then it's like, I really, I have to leave, you know.
Right, right.
But we do try to be graceful because we do know that it will last for 15 minutes, and then everybody will be gone, and there won't be another sound on the street until the morning, you know. So maybe if we could get some teachers or monitor, monitors, parents, neighborhood people, anything like that, to just kind of help out, that would be good.
Yeah, I think I could certainly leverage that. I could try to communicate with our community and see if that's something that they would be willing to do. I, you know, just like I said, I think another viable option is just to explore the idea of like a drop-stop sign or something from the, at least from the east-west perspective. I don't know. I don't know if that would help or not.
I'm going to say probably not.
Right, yeah.
Just because I've seen the traffic, and it's, I see the same cars over and over
Yeah, right.
And so I know where they're going.
Yeah.
And they're usually the ones that are not following directions.
Yeah. Unless there's somebody there to really kind of enforce it and to have a stop sign, walk sign. Yeah.
Yeah.
I see that. Yeah.
But I have noticed with the crosswalk that, as I'm standing there, because I walk my dogs, people are stopping as I'm standing there and giving me the right away. So maybe we started it early, and we are training the neighborhood people that, you know, here's this crosswalk, and now we're stopping. So maybe it, it kind of worked in our favor that we put it up at the end of school. So we've given everybody two, three months to kind of remember that crosswalks are, I mean, pedestrians can cross.
Yeah. And this week, I'm resuming our normal communication to our families through that newsletter. So I'll be making sure I'll put it, you know, some more plugs in there just to kind of preemptively train them, if you will. So, okay?
Well, thank you for coming out, even if you don't want to say. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time.
It's a pleasure meeting you. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, did you-
So the request just is if there's any further action that you'd like to take at this point, or if we should just continue to monitor the situation. I know PD's intending to be very active there. Place cones again at the intersection at the start of school, help create good habits. help create good habits. But if there's further action or steps council would like to see, please let us know and we'll work on that. Otherwise, we've taken some steps and hopefully there'll be improvement.
Yeah, I'd say continue to monitor. I'm eager to hear. Obviously, the first week is not a good indicator of what the traffic will be like because that's the learning curve. But maybe after the second and third week, how things are working out. And I really appreciate Kohl's partnership if, if we did like the temporary stop sign or something that they, they would manage that for us because we're already slim on staff for, for PD to, to manage that. So.
Yeah, I think that is a, that's a point for staff is PD can't commit to be there twice a day at those times just because other incidents do occur. So I think there's a variety of opinions on whether dynamic stop sign would be appropriate there or not. But if it were to move forward, it would likely need to be managed by the school.
All right. Moving on to 6D, consideration of changes to 65th and 66th Street on-street parking.
Yes. So this is a result of a conversation I had with a local resident some time ago and paused the conversation or any action towards it as one of the driving sort of occupants of a building that had on-street parking needs vacated. And we're waiting to see what, what went back in there, the little brother building. Now that we know that there's a likely tenant in there and it's likely not to be a restaurant, that patio area and the change in some of the off-street parking is probably clarified. And so I did want to bring this to council for consideration and a little bit of thought. The proposal is that the current parking on 66th Street, so there's no parking on-street allowed south of university. And then there is north of university, southbound parking that is allowed. So that'd be on the west side of the street. Similar situation off of 65th. The residence point was as folks are trying to identify a parking spot and go into the adjoining businesses there between 65th and 65th Street, as it's set up right now, they would need to go up one of those roads, pull a U-turn or pull into a driveway and turn around and then park, coming back towards university, which is a bit of a dissuasion for them to, to pursue that type of a parking and that it would be easier if the parking was on the side of the street. That would be the direction that they were turning at that point off of university. So we took a look at that and there are a couple of graphics there that show what a reversal of that on-street parking would look like, page 150 and 151 of the packet. So essentially it'd be switching each side of the street that parking is allowed. So on 66th Street, it would be allowed on the east side. You would lose a little bit of parking just because there's some additional driveways on that side of the street. But as it stands right now, the west side, at least the southern parts are part of a turn lane. So you really shouldn't have vehicles parking south of the entrance into the strip center right now as it stands either. You'd gain a little bit of parking on 65th Street north of university and you'd about break even on the south side of 65th Street. So, you know, from City Hall, you can see a lot of these areas. I will say I don't see a lot of on-street parking as it stands today. You know, there's been some active on and off conversations about development north of City Hall, which could change that situation in the future. So I guess I don't see a pressing need for it right now, but I also understand the rationale of it and don't generally think it's a bad idea. So something for awareness if nothing else. But if you would like us to move forward with switching the sides of street that parking is on, along university there on 65th and 66th, we've gone through the conversation with Public Works and Police and our Fire Marshal, and we can do that fairly simply. So if nothing else, awareness today for potential future action if we see more developments. But it's something that we could proactively do today prior to seeing more developments as well.
Yes, I personally see some concerns regarding changing the, this parking. I'm struggling to see how the shift in parking will provide really a benefit to all of the businesses, or if it's just one business in general that it will help. Currently, the west side of 66th is used by the church for parking as well as businesses along university. And parking in that area is already very limited. So by relocating parking to the east side of the street, we reduce the available spaces further, which would create challenges not only for the church, but also maybe for the, the businesses nearby. Moving parking to the east side would encourage more pedestrian crossings, potentially mid-block to go over to the church as people, you know, make their way to the church or the businesses within wherever, whatever it's called that grounds and parasailing. I don't know the.
Town center.
That's it. That, it creates just a, a safety concern and adds to the congestion that we maybe are seeing in that corridor. I don't support switching the parking configuration on 65th Street for what amounts to roughly one block. What I observed, most of those vehicles parked in that area belonged to patrons of GG's or Centerfield. And moving parking to the opposite side of the street will again lead to more people crossing mid-block, especially, especially since we did know that most pedestrians take the shortest route from point A to point B, whether or not it's at a designated crosswalk. I think these changes could also create enforcement issues. We already experienced difficulty with drivers following posted signage, including the current no parking zones, as I weaseled around people today parked on both sides of the street. Adding new signage and switching parking to the opposite side for just that short stretch may compound that confusion rather than resolve it. So my personal recommendation is that we take a more data-driven approach and monitor the current, current parking trends and then revisit the discussion if and when a new development occurs.
The, the north side, north of university, the 66th Street, moving the parking there up to the church makes sense to me because somebody hits that drive-through at Grounds for Celebration a little too often. Pulling out of there can be really hard, especially if there's a car south of there. But the, south of university, I know that we used to park on the west side of the street. And then we flipped it a few years, we, it was before I was on council, changed it to the right side of the street. So that way, when there's events out the park and people are parked on the street, they're had, naturally headed away from the events and not headed back down to the park and having to turn around in order to leave. And I don't know that there is a huge need for the commercial buildings there for more parking from a business perspective. But I guess something open to more data in the future and if the need arises.
Sounds good.
All right. Moving on to 6E, discussion on code review project. Adam, I think you'll take it from here?
Yes. So continuation of the code update process. We're now getting into the back half of the code here and have a few items that we just wanted to bring to your attention. If you have any feedback or comments at this stage, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll just sort of run through them here. So chapter 60, the addition of Hickman as a designated truck route. That would be for heavy vehicles. We try to get those onto specific roads, particularly not residential roads. It's great for roads that we don't have to maintain. Neighboring jurisdictions have Hickman listed. We'd like to add that as a designated truck route in Windsor Heights. Chapter or section 60.12, adding UTVs, which are slightly larger than ATVs, as generally prohibited on city streets. There are exceptions that are redlined in here, generally speaking for ATVs regarding parades and other designated city uses. But just want to make sure that we've got both ATVs and UTVs covered. 60.13.06, not forcing bicycles onto the trailer sidewalk. That is to try to marry up with some litigation, I believe, in the past that would conflict with state law. Chapter 97, use of public stores, public sewers, so stormwater drainage. As we were reading through this section, there's, there's a number of changes that are proposed here. First and foremost, we're not aware of any sanitary sewers that are combined with stormwater in Windsor Heights. We've asked around to about as many folks as we have, can, including our sanitary sewer district, and we haven't found any. So at this point, we're ready to strike those references into the code just to not confuse anybody on that point. Confirming a requirement for a right-of-way permit to discharge into the right-of-way. So that would typically be a connection created in that right-of-way. We want to be aware of those connections. We just ran into this on Willshire a while ago where the former mayor informed us that there had been a, a connection created at some point and that it was an active one. So we want to make sure that we're, we're getting permits when somebody makes those public connections so that we're aware of them and make sure that they're appropriate. Right now, the current code could be interpreted as restricting or not allowing stormwater drainage to reach public streets. That is not realistic. We do want to maintain the 10-foot separation in instances we can from that discharging from the right-of-way, give a little bit of opportunity for that water to infiltrate into grass ideally. But point-blank restricting it from reaching the street doesn't marry up with what other cities' regulations are or the practicalities on the street. And then some additional language is proposed for dealing with stormwater nuisances, situations where there may be backyard stormwater drainage areas that become obstructed. Somebody has got a downspout that's plugged and is spilling out of their gutters onto a driveway or a neighboring property, instances like that where private drainage that's on single-family residential homes, typically ones that don't have a site plan that restricts or directs how stormwater management should be taking place there. Want to make sure we can get onto those properties and that we can enforce issues as arise if they're causing issues for their neighbors. So the redline's included in there. If you'd like to read through that, if you have any questions. Otherwise, that's the general goals of that draft redline, that chapter. Chapter 98 is onsite wastewater systems, septic tanks. So chapter 95 has some reference segments associated with this as well. So prior code revisions have essentially required all septic tanks be eliminated in the city of Windsor Heights. That does not marry up with the practicalities. There are two known septic systems in Windsor Heights on 63rd Street. They're included in the map there in that staff report, 1730, 1734. They're both fairly new ones. Polk County typically will do an inspection. And if it's a fairly old septic tank, require replacement and an upgrade at a time of transfer. But our city code has some requirements that are in there. Essentially, if you're not more than 200 feet from a sanitary sewer main, you would have had to have connected previously. And if you did have a sanit, if you did have a septic tank, you'd be required to perform an annual inspection and submit it to the city. Both of these properties are within 200 feet of a sanitary sewer, but sanitary sewer is not run down this section of 63rd Street. So for them to connect, they would have to go through private properties to get to an adjoining sanitary sewer to the west. And we've never received a inspection report from either of those properties that I'm aware of. So we've talked to Polk County. They're not overly concerned about these two systems. They are fairly new. They will inspect them at time of transfers. We've proposed in the code that they can remain if they're within, if they're not, if they're more than 100 feet from a sanitary sewer and that we can require an inspection if, if the city decides one is needed, but not to require it annually. If at some point in time, 63rd Street is reconstructed, that would be an ideal time to add sanitary sewer on that section. And that would probably be an appropriate time to get sanitary sewer within 100 feet and to require those properties to connect, presuming that there's not topography issues that could restrict that, requiring a grinder pump for some of, some other sort of connection there.
So the other houses between Washington and Franklin on 63rd, they're, they're all going through their backyard, connecting over somewhere to the west?
I do not know exactly how they are connected.
Okay.
But the sanitary sewer district believes they are connected to the sanitary sewer system.
Okay.
And the property transfers indicate that they are connected. There are some, there's been some changes in the state law of disclosures of private sewer system, septic tanks over the years. If a house is sold on a sheriff's sale, it's not a required disclosure. And I think at least one of these adjoining properties was sold via sheriff's sale. So it's a little unclear to me on that. There's also a couple of other areas in town that we're not 100% certain, but these are the only two that I am certain of. And public records, I haven't been able to definitively determine whether there's other septic tanks out there or not. It is possible that these are two known ones that we have.
So can we go back to the, the septic tank? So they will be allowed, even with this, they will be allowed to maintain how they are until either they have to change something or 63rd Street is reconstructed? Is that how we're saying?
They would be beholden to Polk County Board of Health requirements. So they're the ones that do the inspections. If they fail an inspection at a time of transfer or there's a seepage issue that they become aware of, then do an inspection. They could require a replacement. But yes, barring, as, as the draft code is proposed, barring a connection on 63rd Street because they're more than 100 feet from sanitary sewer, they would not be required to connect. Whereas today, they're in conflict with code.
Just to add to that, most likely there's fails for some reason. There's not enough room for them to put one back. So you need so much room in there to install another one. So if something failed where they couldn't repair them, they have, they have to figure out of that.
That sounds like fun.
Okay. Especially after the last one. That was an interesting one.
We hope for some good luck.
Any questions or concerns about that direction? Otherwise, we can engage the sanitary sewer district to more conversation, but I think they're comfortable with this route from the conversations I've done. In that case, chapter 151, trees and vegetation. This one is timely, given our other agenda items. I think as Aaron and I may have worked through that, we found some opportunities to streamline that process a little bit. It's tedious. So we can't make it super simple and straightforward, but there are a couple of revisions that we propose in here just that limit the number of publications and the way that we have to communicate all the information for a special assessment for a tree planting or tree removal. Other than that, we have the final round of questions from Simmering Quarry. We'll be working through those, bringing back any feedback on those items here within the next month or so. And then hopefully have a final redline for you to consider early this fall.
All right. Well, that was fun. Moving on to number 6F, discussion on Colby Park water access design and bid document. Is that Adam? Is that a?
Nate will pick it off for us here.
Don't all point it up once, guys.
Potentially pull up that map just so we have a reference point as we're talking?
Sure.
If possible. Be the Colby Park water access landscape design map.
While he's getting that pulled up, I'll just share a general update. At the moment, we're, we're, from a permitting standpoint, we just have DNR and the local city floodplain permitting left to go through. The DNRs had the floodplain permit application for at least eight weeks. I would imagine that we'd start to see, start to see that come through here over the next four weeks. So that puts us in pretty decent shape to start bidding sometime in September with construction not to start until after October for, just to avoid any issues with endangered species. So no tree removal could happen until after October. And, and then just associated to that is really just construction start in general would want to be after that as well. So that's a general update. And then I have some things to go through, some, some, some things where we'd like council to weigh in on some things. I'm going to have you, I'm going to have you skip this one, Nate. Let's look at the signage first. So at the point where the water access trail connects to the Windsor Trail, we have a Icon Water signage location, kind of a wayfinding sign for people that are visiting the site to see where they're at within the, the overall Icon Water Trails network. to see where they're at within the, the overall Icon Water Trails Network. There we go. So we have a couple of options. This first option is what was initially priced. Looking at it, and this is, this is my thought, my recommendation here. It's, it's a pretty good sized sign to have right next to the trail. And then we also have those trees next to the trail as well. I would actually suggest that we look at stepping that sign down to option two, which would be a savings as well. I don't know where it went.
Sorry. Trying to make it so Michael can see as well.
Oh, great. There you go. That's important. Okay, here we go. So this first option here, a cost of plus or minus $20,000 for that unit. What you're seeing is, is two sides of the same side or of the same sign, excuse me. There's a regional side showing the, the water access site within the whole network. And then there's a more local side that would talk more about the Windsor Heights community, what's in the area there. So then the second option is a step down in scale. It's more about an eight-foot high sign. So just a metal frame with putting in the ground at the base. Same concept, still a regional side and a local side, but just on a smaller scale. So with that, we can go on to the rest of it, Adam, do you think? Or do you want to have individual conversations as we move through this?
Yeah, if there's any initial impressions, that staff recommendation is the $10,000 sign, it's a little more in scale. You're probably not going at a regional level from Walnut Creek in most instances, so bigger signage probably isn't as necessary in this instance.
Agreed. I also like that there's, let's say by chance, Colby Park gets some water. It looks like water could flow underneath and not damage the sign or cause more headaches. So just on the off chance that were to ever happen again, I like this design too.
Okay. Okay, that's good. And we can always come back to this, but let's move on now to the original graphic you had up there, Nate. So now what we'll be talking about here is, is a couple of proposed net adds to the project really, but this first one that I want to talk about is change in the approach with the landscape of the project. So a little bit of history here, the Walnut Creek was originally pre seventies, pre 1970s. Was a winding creek through here and in the seventies, the creek was, was straightened out through a stream straightening project. Since then, we've done some aerial studies, historical aerial studies of the project area. And in that entire time since the seventies to now, it hasn't really supported overstory tree growth, which is what we have been planning on having there, creating kind of a, an enclosed environment, more intimate setting for people that are visiting the water access. So seeing that there hasn't been overstory tree growth supported in that time, we're changing our approach a little bit and we'd like feedback from council on this, but we're changing our approach a little bit in that on the east side of the, of the creek, we're proposing a massings of sandbar willow, so that salix interior. It's a kind of a shrubby growth, but it'll create still kind of a nice enclosed environment. But definitely does a lot better in areas where we have a little bit more difficult soil conditions. So we would propose changing that to a sandbar willow on the east side. And then on the west side of the creek, what we propose doing is taking that, those overstory trees and evergreen trees and placing them on the other side of the river where there's a kind of a higher shelf right next to 3E there. So there was some discussion about 3E, maybe, maybe donating some property or something of the like, but it ultimately comes down to, I think that they would prefer that the trees would just be planted, they would grant access to contractor to plant these trees. But ultimately with the goal of screening the industrial area that is 3E with a mix of overstory trees, you can see that there are some overstory over there now. But we would, we would enhance that and we would also implement some evergreen trees to provide some year-round screening.
When it says site access, does that mean like we are able to, or Public Works or somebody else is able to get in access into that area to?
Good question. That site access would be for the contractor to install the trees. I think there would have to be some sort of agreement in addition to that if, if 3E, for example, wants the city to maintain those trees.
Thank you.
The goal is really just to create a little bit more of an aesthetic feel when you're looking across the creek there and not see the semis in the parking lot. So they're generous and letting us plant something there, I think. Unfortunately, they're not in a position right now to donate the property, but maybe at some point in the future.
So that's that portion of the project. You can see the numbers break down there as far as what the net add would be. Essentially what we're doing is the, the cost of the trees that we had on the east side of the, of the creek that that cost would go to the groupings of sandbar willows. And then the additional costs that you're seeing there would, would basically be the addition of, of the trees on the west side. So for a net add of 15,000 and some change, I think.
So it'll add like 5,000 since we're going to the other model for the tower, right?
I don't know how you netted out with the trees that we originally had on the, the east side up against the water trail. And I, I don't know, what's the cost estimate for the willows?
Plus or minus 8,000, I think is what I have on there. So between that and what we had originally specified over there on the east side was about 8,000 as well. So that's a wash on the east side. Then we're adding the trees on the west. So when you're, I think what you're getting at is when you factor in the, the reduction in cost of, of going to a reduced scale sign is the net add about 5,000? And yeah, I would say that's, that's about the case. We do have some, in order to add these into the plans, we do have some additional consulting fees to make all that happen, including what we'll talk about here in a minute with 63rd, with the 63rd Street car barrier. But as far as construction costs go, that would be correct. So thoughts on this before we move on to the car barrier then?
I like the adding evergreen to.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be good.
Be nice.
Okay. Then the next one here is the car barrier. This has been in front of council, I think, at least once, maybe twice. I don't think this particular version has been in front of council though. This, this version removes, removes what was a monument sign in that area. And I'll back up just a little bit to bring people up to speed. This is, this is the, across the street from the off ramp. If you're westbound on 235 and you're exiting onto 30th or on the 63rd Street, this would be on the opposite side of, of the street there. And the idea of this, this proposed project is that it would create a car barrier, prevent, I guess runaway vehicles from crossing 63rd and then up onto the curb and then end up in this gentleman's driveway or or not driveway, but backyard there. So this project would be just to create that car barrier. Like I mentioned initially, there was a monument sign, but it proved to be pretty costly to get electrical there. And then also just to build the sign. So this is a reduced scale approach, just with some limestone blocks right next to 63rd Street there lined up in kind of a staggered row. And the idea for bringing this back in front of you guys today, in front of council here is to consider putting this into the Walnut Creek Water Access Project as an alternate. And so really just looking at feedback for you guys today on that. And, and the costs, you can see there, the construction costs are between 20 and 25. We had design fees on here of 5,000 to do this work. That said, if we tuck it into the Walnut Creek Water Access Plans, we'll probably see those consulting fees come down a little bit on that.
Just a couple of additional points on that. Thank you, Nate. The limestone blocks here are pretty similar to the ones that are being used for the, the water access. So I guess it was my hope that you may see some cost reduction by including it as a bid alternate here, if you choose to move forward with it as an alternate. And I'm really just looking to get a definitive answer on this because we did put it on the CIP during the last budget session. Then we discussed it with the signage later and decided not to move forward with that. So I just want to make sure I can communicate back to the resident whether this is or is not happening with or without the monument sign. But if we choose not to move forward with it here, we'll remove it from the CIP and, and we'll communicate that over to him. So just looking to kind of put this to rest, I guess, so that he doesn't feel like he's been back and forth a couple of times on this based off of previous conversations I've had with him.
The cost for this feels much more in line with our initial conversations when we, I think, added it to the CIP. I think this is a lot closer to what we were wanting to spend. And of course, the complications with electrical for the monument sign made it harder, so. I like this.
I don't feel that we should add this to the, the trail signage. Just reviewing data from the Iowa crash analysis tool covering the years 2015 through 2025, there have been a total of seven accidents on 235, the on-ramp, and also 63rd Street in that area. They've been property damage only from what have been reported. I just, for an intersection that sees 15,000 cars daily, the, I just don't think that it's worth $30,000. You know, we, we hemmed and hawed about providing a resident with $1,500 worth of landscaping bricks on something that we did actually to his yard through a, a construction project. And I just think that, you know, by doing this, we're setting a precedent and it kind of opens, opens up doors to similar requests across the city whenever damage does happen, regardless of the situation. So for me, it's kind of a slippery scope, slope. If I remember correctly, the Iowa DOT does not see a need fair barrier there due to the crash histories. It's a fairly safe intersection. While I, I do feel for the person, you know, it's never fun to have a, a car come through your, your yard, but it could happen to any of us at any point in time as well. So I just, I don't feel that this with how we're having to cut costs here and there. I just, I can't get on board with spending $30,000 or so on a car barrier for a place that's had seven accidents in the scope of 2015 to 2025.
Michael, do you want to weigh in? He's still online.
No, I think I, I like the car barrier idea. I'm not so sure that it needs to be limestone blocks. I mean, there are other choices. They're not as pretty or as aesthetic as this. You know, they could be as simple as some type of metal structure that we've seen posted in other places. But I, I, I agree with Susan. 30 grand on something like this is, is is expensive. And I'm, so I'm inclined not to proceed.
We will move forward without the alternate. We did look at some other options. This is actually one of the lesser expensive ones, but I think long-term when 63rd Street is reconstructed again, we would encourage the DOT to extend that median further north, which they've pushed back on because of ADA restrictions. But that's probably the, the ultimate solution and the first one that we, we had a discussion with them on, but they weren't willing to pursue because of the price at that point.
Did we provide enough information? All righty, moving on then to number six G, consideration of approval of resolution 2025 dash 64, a resolution approving purchase of police vehicle.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Pete Roth, the City Windsor Heights Police Department. In your packet, you'll find our request for authorization to purchase a vehicle to replace one of our unmarked squad cars, which is the silver, or the silver Explorer that, that you see me driving around town sometimes. If you note that we had in our ERP for this year, $65,000 set aside or earmarked for that purchase. We don't think that we'll get there, we'll probably come under that. But just with the costs have been fluctuating lately with tariffs, no tariffs, tariffs, no tariffs. We just have some issues with trying to get some of the equipment for it. It will be another SUV hybrid, unmarked car, but it'll be sort of outfitted for sort of patrol use since I have been doing more patrol work lately, just to have that flexibility with that vehicle. The plan is, is to sell the Silver Taurus, which is sitting out back there. You can see in your packet that since the Taurus is 2014 year, one of the dealers estimated that we would get a $4,000 trade-in on that vehicle, which we think it's probably worth a little bit more than that. So we have it listed on GOV deals right now to see if we can't get more than, more than that on that. If not, we will, if approved, use that trade-in toward the price of the, of the vehicle, which is 46,000 and some change there. But it will be a hybrid. It will bring us up to, I think, four total in our fleet. And this also went through our Public Safety Committee back on December 19th and they had no wishes with it either. So I'll answer any questions you have.
I'm just saying another hybrid Sienna could be good for the fleet. But you're right, now we did, Public Safety did vote.
Yeah, this will be, Toyota does not have a police interceptor package.
Fair enough.
So I just, just kind of looking through things, I see that we're going out to Clear Lake for this. I'm just wondering, the, the difference between the Stivers and here is like $640. So.
The difference is, is that they have one coming here in about a month. Stivers will have to order it and that will take months to get in. So all they have out there is just black vehicles and we wanted a different color than black. So it'd be more of a high, be more of an unmarked flexibility option for us. They were cheaper and we have been getting lower bids up there from Electronic Engineering in Mason City to outfit our equipment. And we're talking like $4,000 difference in price for the outfitting there. So they could just drop the car off for us at, at the Electronic Engineering once it, if they were the correct or the lowest bid. So that's why we went with Pritchard. So, and Stivers and Pritchard's got back to us, so.
You know, I just trying to purchase locally as much as possible, just because that's, you know, we'd like to kind of streamline the logistics and also, you know, spend taxpayer money within the metro. So just kind of wondered why we haven't purchased our last two vehicles from the metro. But if it's because we can't get it or, you know.
Our van was purchased with Toyota Des Moines, so it was Metro, but it was Dallas County. So I don't know how that works for sales tax. We're just kind of stuck with, with state bids and availability. And we, we do contact all of our local vendors too, before we search outs, outside for other remedies too. But we're really trying to save a buck here at this moment in time and get the vehicle, so. And the person at Pritchard's is actually a, he's a police officer too. He knows police cars and he knows the packages and what we need to suit our needs. So that's the reason why I just reached out to him, just to get a bid, just to see what they would come in at, so.
Any further questions or comments from council?
Can you tell us what color it is if it's not black?
It'll be gray. Resellability, it's easy to clean and it, a lot of gray cars on the street, so it kind of blends in, so.
Exciting. Thanks, Chief. All right, do we have a motion? Motion to approve resolution 2564.
Second.
Roll call?
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
All right, moving on to number six H.
Consideration of preliminary resolution 2025 dash 62. A resolution pursuant to section 384 dot 42 of the Iowa code to implement and assess the cost of the 2025 tree removal project.
Yes, so these next three actions are all related together and a little wonky. We're trying to follow the appropriate state and city processes closely as we can. For special assessment, it is well unusual because it's tree removal as opposed to construction. But I'm going to talk through all three of these steps and kind of where we're at in this process real quickly. And then you can consider HI and J sequentially. So 2024, we identified trees and we continue to identify trees, although we've stopped adding trees in this 2025 tree removal project at this point. And a great number of them have been resolved, 26 of them. The 19 remaining trees in need of removal or trimming. Vast majority of the residents have contacted us and either have a plan to remove them, plan to cooperate with the city to remove them. But we do have a couple, I think, three still, Nate?
I think it's three properties, four trees total.
Three properties that have yet to respond to us and could be subject to this special assessment, presuming the rest of the folks continue along the trajectory of conversations we've had. The RFP is out on the streets, has an estimated cost of plus or minus $50,000 for the estimated 20 trees or so that will need to be removed. Tonight, they'll be considering the preliminary resolution confirming that engagement of the arborist and the intent to move forward with the removal of those trees. The resolution of necessity confirming that those tree removal schedules at the bottom of the staff report and the attached trees are the appropriate trees in need of removal. And then step three is to set a public hearing for September 15th. That dates out their ways because of some of the public notice requirements in the newspapers, as well as communication back and forth with the residents. Once we get the RFP numbers back, we can send them their certified letters and communicate to them the price for that removal so they can make their final decisions. And then thereafter, we'll hold that public hearing or the RFP contract and notify the impacted residents via certified mail of the intent to move forward. And then towards the end of September, complete that paperwork to implement those special assessments. So we've got a little bit of ways in the process to go here yet. But mid-August, we'll open up those proposals, communicate with the residents, the intended price, award that contract on or before September 15th. And then the deadline for completion of the tree removal from the winning bidder is December 1st, although hopefully they'll have them out prior to that. Happy to answer any questions you have or Aaron, feel free to clarify if I misspoke on anything.
Yeah, no, I think you're good. It's kind of a long haul of a process. And it's unknown if we will need to assess against any of these properties or not. So at this point, we're just following the process as we would if we were going to assess against each of these properties. And we expect that most of them will fall off. And at the end, it will just be a few that we're actually assessing.
And thank you, Councilmember Scaries, for a couple of corrections on that Exhibit A. Those are corrected in the digital packet.
So I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. So we identified the trees, notified the homeowners or property owners. And then the property owner has the option of taking care of it themselves, which some have, or being a part of the group bid, which assuming would be a lower, potentially a lower rate with the contractor that the city.
Yeah, so we give them that bid price. And then if they're in agreement with that, we'll give them a voluntary payment agreements.
Yep.
To confirm that, where they can go off and hire their own contractor.
Okay.
To remove it.
And then if they both don't want to hire their own contractor and are unable or not willing to pay for the, their portion of that, then that's when we get to the special assessment territory.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And there is an option that we floated where they could agree through a voluntary assessment agreement.
Sure.
Where they would agree to a payment over a certain, a payment or an assessment over a certain number of years that the council would decide.
Okay.
And we would just file that. So it's kind of carrot and stick at the same time.
Sure.
But we're just trying to, we're trying to give people options, but also ensure that we're not doing this each time for each individual property.
Yeah, okay. Kind of similar to our approach with the sidewalk stuff, right? Is that either they can fix it or, I mean, I get that it's a different project, but a similar approach, okay?
Very similar. We'd have to be the same process going on for the sidewalk, if not for the success Andy's had in getting to a deal or getting compliance on all of those. So we're foregoing the special assessment process there.
Fantastic. All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments from council? Motion?
Motion to, wait, motion to approve the resolution 2025 62?
Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
All right, moving on to number six I. Consideration of resolution number 2025 dash 63. Resolution of necessity pursuant to section 384 dot 49 of the Iowa code covering the 2025 tree removal project. Do we have a motion?
Yep, motion to approve resolution 2025 63.
Second.
All right, roll call?
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
Um, let's see, number six J. Consideration of resolution number 2025 dash 61. A resolution setting time and place for a public hearing on the 2025 tree removal project. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Lauren Campbell?
Yes.
I'll just note for Adam Strate's purposes, if he was here, they'd be in the correct order, but I put together the agenda, so.
Well, I looked at that and thought, wait, am I counting these right? So I did look at it.
You didn't even have to point it out.
Alrighty, moving on to reports. Lauren?
Movie in the Park Friday was fantastic. We could not have asked for better weather, especially after how the earlier part of the week went. Thank you to city staff and our volunteers for making that possible. Working on Fall Festival. Oh, the Public Safety Night Out on Tuesday was fantastic despite the warm weather. But it did provide an excellent education opportunity for, with the temperature sensor that showed how hot it gets inside of a car. And while overlapping with the YMCA camp, may have provided some challenges. I think it also provided a lot of opportunity for the camp kids. They went over and chatted with their friends at Westcom, made new friends at Westcom. They got some bracelets, they got some swag from all the vendors. So I thought that went fantastic as well. So thanks to all the city staff for making that possible. I'll be attending DART tomorrow for Joseph. So I guess I'll see you.
You did?
I think that's all I've got.
Michael?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Alrighty. We held our monthly Special Events Committee meeting a few Fridays ago. Last Tuesday, I also had the opportunity to attend Public Safety Night despite the heat. I think it was well-attended. So thank you to all the sponsors and to Clive and Windsor Heights Police and Fire Department for organizing a great event. On Friday, I attended Greg Edwards' retirement celebration from Catch Des Moines. It was a vibrant and well-attended event reflective of Greg's impactful career. While it's sad to see him retire from Catch Des Moines, I'm confident Trina will carry on his legacy. Following tonight's meeting, Lauren and I will continue planning for Fall Festival. Preparations are well underway and I encourage everyone to keep that weekend open for volunteer opportunities or you will be voluntold for those opportunities. Wednesday, I, I have an executive board meeting for Metro Waste Authority. Next Monday, I'll attend the Catch Des Moines Annual Breakfast at the Iowa State Fair. Wake Up Windsor Heights will be held August 14th at Edward Jones on 73rd and University. Sign up now if you'd like to attend. And I can't believe our next Special Events meeting is scheduled for next week, August 15th. It doesn't seem like we've had a month in between. I don't know where the time went, so. Movie in the Park was fantastic, great weather. So appreciate everyone that came out and helped out with the movie. I did not do my annual count because I don't really know why, but there were a lot of people, so we'll just go with that.
It was huge, huge.
Adam?
Congratulations to Windsor Heights residents on excellent work recycling. Some cookies were dropped off today. If any would like some for our 11% rejection rate on recycling. And then we've got a number of staff reports here. I'll touch on the Forest Court one and Justin, feel free to chime in if you've got any additional comments. Andy, if you want to hit any highlights on the next three and Nate on the last one. So just as a reminder, when we bid out Forest Court overlay, we, we struggled with whether it should be a reconstruction project or an overlay project. And so just really wanted to put into the documentation here kind of what we saw. And hopefully we can all monitor it going forward and use that as information as we get into similar situations on future capital investment projects for, for overlays and/or reconstructions. What was underneath the overlay that was ripped up was very bad condition. We about doubled the amount of full-depth reconstruction because of that. Could have gone far beyond that and probably done the whole road. Rain and the heavy traffic that was on the removed overlay pulverized some areas of that. But our contractor did a good job. He got it in there. It looks great today. There's just a few bits left to do from last time I drove over there. Some dirt needs to be added in back to the curb and they were still working on a manhole earlier today too. So they're wrapping that up. But I think we'll, we'll want to see, A, how the recycled plastic bags hold up, since that's a novel product that Justin helped bring to us on this project. And B, see how long we can expect this overlay to, to maintain, given the sub, the subsurface under there as well. It certainly is much cheaper to do an overlay project versus reconstruction, far less painful for the residents on that street. It looks good today and hopefully it will be for the next five or eight years. But something to keep an eye on and add into our sort of information decision process in the future as we have to balance long-term repairs and short-term needs. Andy?
It's on a noteworthy path. They are going to back though, but we'll hold on siding as long as we possibly can. Have a little bit better success rate on it.
You don't want to do it when it's 90 degrees out?
No. We can hold out for a little bit, great. Right before the snow. Couple of reports, three reports that I had kind of put together, some status update stuff. Sidewalk inspection program, we are going to forego doing assessment process on, on those. The property owners notified have been pretty responsive and we've gotten, had numerous conversations about the deficiencies that they were notified about. So Zone 1 and 2, we did not get the repairs done for Zone 1 last year. So we're going to couple them with, with Zone 2 this year and include those all together. I think there's 19 or so panels that folks have opted in to the city project out of the 49. So more information to come on that. Update on the 74 Storm Sewer Heavy Cleaning Update or Project, excuse me, between 73rd and 74th Street. So if you guys recall, the storm sewer line was severely contaminated with rock, dirt, pavement. You name it, it was kind of down there. There was tools, there was steel. There was kind of a mess of stuff that the contractor pulled out of there. You guys, council had authorized up to $55,000 for the cleaning of that debris. We came well beneath that, that amount. I think, there it is. So the challenge with that was is the access points of being able to get to that material. What we ended up doing, we attempted to kind of come in from both directions unsuccessfully. So we thought our next best option would be is to come directly over the area that had the most debris. Luckily, there was an old access point that we could utilize. We had to make some modifications to that. Basically, what we did is we open excavated the area, punched through the top of the storm pipe. And the contractor was able to clean it out from there, which caused us to have to do some restoration work. But given everything else that we kind of faced and potential costs that we were looking at, we only spent less than $12,000 to clean that out. So good collaboration with our contractor and the guys down in our department. Moving on, storm water best management practices, kind of highlight some participation for our BMP program. Last year, FY25, we had eight participants in that project. This is something that I see as something that is very underutilized, that the city provides funding for. Council had authorized, I think initially $10,000 to kind of kick the program off 2018, 2019 timeframe, I believe. Currently, it's funded out of our stormwater fund. And there's ample funds in there. We've been trying to create awareness about it. Our participation and involvement in the Walnut Creek Watershed Authority, as well as neighboring communities with Clive, Urbendale. One of the things that are, the WMA just implemented or adopted and is implementing is a five-year program to increase the quality of the watershed. And that's broken out into, I think, five different goals. And each community kind of has a responsibility or something to kind of work, work toward a goal that's attainable and either increase in capacity, storage capacity, or improve processes or practices within their own community that all kind of collectively reach the, the goals of that, the WMA. One of these things is trying to capture the benefits of a BMP program, whether it's rain barrels, soil quality restoration, rain gardens, stuff like that. That's all, you can kind of calculate, calculate that into what that means for Windsor Heights and, and our contribution to that. So it's a very underutilized program, in my opinion. I think the last three years, we've had less than 25 folks participate in that. Which every month, we put out something in the newsletter, there's information on our website, social media post. We have Earth Day celebration. There's information out there. But if, if people can get more involved in that, there's funding there, that's there. Plus it, it's just a benefit from a stormwater side. The, the benefits are tremendous and very minimal input for the effect that you get on the downside of it. So. Adam S. is going to be Gil the Fish in.
I was going to ask. I'm Gil. I am so excited about your parade entry. It's.
Which I don't know, do we need to, to sign up for that or how do we do?
Let's bet him real quick. Yes, you're in.
Okay, so.
Are you going to have a table set up for a kind of, call it the vendor?
Sure.
And you know, at least have.
Maybe.
Yeah.
We're also pretty free.
Get involved and involve us.
So I don't.
Well, that, that's why I was wondering if you had, I didn't want to like, even if you could take just a little bit of time or even put like your nice shed.
Yeah.
Talk of a better term that you built that was amazing that you had out there for Earth Day. That might be.
Can do.
Nice.
A static display.
Maybe we could put you with like the DNR if we can get them back out and kind of sandwich you together. And then if duty calls.
Yeah, I was going to say if we might have some other collaborating partners that might be there. So it would be something we could just kind of have them babysit for us. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Just so that we're clear, it is very easy to get involved in our Fall Festival Parade and to be a vendor. You can email Susan and I or specialevents@windsorheights.org. We would love to get anyone in, including Trey, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Sorry, I did go back, you dropped my memory. I did go back and look. It was Carousel for the van, Stivers for the last SUV. And then they had the two from Olathe, Kansas, that was, that. that was that COVID thing. So we have kind of hodgepodge it around, but we've really been looking for the lowest bids just so we can maximize our ERP dollars. So that, and we do try local first, I just wanted to update the notes for that. How's CEC doing, Nate?
CEC is doing okay.
Uh-oh.
That's fine.
Bringing out the phone.
Yeah. Just so I've got my notes handy here, um. So, uh, I provided the report in the, um, in the packet for you guys. Um, major notes for twenty twenty-five, uh, the, uh, fiscal year twenty-five. Uh, the CEC was blocked for city events ranging from Fall Festival to road reconstruction, open houses or maintenance items such as floor buffing, uh, duct cleaning, solar installation, uh, for nineteen full days and twenty-five partial days. Uh, the twenty-five partial days, uh, added up to roughly eight full rental days for a total of twenty-seven full days used by the city. Um, this was an increase from the previous year's report, but, uh, closings have been better documented this year. Um, previous years, I didn't really keep track of when we were closed down for maintenance items, so trying to keep better track of that. Um, so that's included in this report. Uh, many of the partial days this fiscal year were due to, uh, maintenance items and upgrades that we didn't have previously, such as, uh, receiving and assembling the new tables that are down there, which look fantastic, uh, the installation of solar, uh, some floor waxing, which we do annually, um, window cleanings, which we do semi-annually, things along those lines. Uh, tables mentioned above were replaced in April. Uh, the income from the CEC is partially diverted to the ERP fund, which was used to fund these tables. So that did not come directly out of the budget, but it is related. Uh, solar panels, uh, have also been installed. Um, this will reduce ideally, uh, future expenses, uh, for the remainder of this year and beyond. Uh, please note that this project was funded through the CIP and not reflected in the expenses above. Uh, total income was slightly lower than fiscal year twenty-four, uh, but it was still above operating expenses, which is great, uh, resulted in a next, a net positive. Uh, and we operated more than sixty-one thousand below budgeted expenses, which is fantastic as well. Um, park, uh, construction did affect, uh, quarter one of operations of, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, so that would be from July to September. Um, and so we saw some decreased revenue opportunities there, uh, but we're aiming to come back stronger than ever this year. So moving right along.
And you're attending, um, bridal wedding shows now?
Yes, um, so we've got one, uh, coming up, uh, the twenty-fourth of this month that I'll be out at. So if you know anyone who is, uh, getting married, send them my direction, be happy to show them around and, uh, get them, get them set up, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
I was hoping we'd make at least till eight, so I could find something to want.
I think we're all okay with, um, motion to adjourn.
Uh, motion to, to adjourn, second.
Roll call?
Susan Scaries?
Yes.
Michael Libby?
Yes.
Question, I, I know that.